...that they've never even been there before?
Yes.
I'm amazed. In my family, I say, well, you know, I was visiting the multipurpose center in Hollywood. You go, what multipurpose center? It's there. It's in the neighborhood.
And that's the beauty of this model is it's so basic.
Yes.
You know, you would think, you drive by it every day, or your daughter drives by it every day, but to take the time in a chaotic life to actually explore and find out what it is when you're also trying to provide care, or when you're basically just trying to stay at home safely is hard. So that's one of the most gratifying moments is when we can say, you know what, this service actually does exist and it's right here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Well, of course, the part I love the most is the congregate meal programs where seniors can come together and visit and share a meal. This has been such a treat to meet you and congratulations on the good work you're doing. I wish this program all the success.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being our guest.
It's my pleasure, absolutely.
And thank you for joining us as well here on Aging Well in L.A. See you next time.
Hi, my name's Louis and I'm at Pan Pacific Park and you're watching L.A. City View 35. It's our city, it's our channel.
In L.A. this week, Memorial Day ceremonies across the Southland pay tribute to our fallen heroes.
Your input needed to help determine exactly how over a billion dollars in sidewalk repairs will be spent. I'm Gil Reyes with more on a series of community meetings and you're invited.
I'm Anna Marcos. Water quality at the port is better than it's been in 40 years, but there are still challenges. More on the port's latest environmental summit coming up.
Hello and welcome to L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. Our top story this week, northeast L.A. kicked off the unofficial start of summer with Memorial Day observances, one of them a local tradition since 1947. Gil Reyes reports from this round-the-clock vigil.
Together, they stood watch for 24 hours straight. Students from the LAPD's cadet training program among the volunteers for this Memorial Day weekend ritual.
There were individuals, veterans, community people, different organizations that have come up here and have stood watch all the 24 hours.
From 10:00 a.m. Sunday to 10:00 a.m. Monday on Memorial Day, volunteers stood guard over the Mexican-American All Wars Memorial in Boyle Heights. Volunteers stood in 15-minute shifts, a tribute to fallen service members.
And those that gave the ultimate price so that we can have freedom.
Also in northeast L.A., the new El Sereno Veterans Monument hosted a Memorial Day weekend observance. Councilman Jose Wezar worked with area veterans to unveil the monument back in February.
We gather to remember those brave men and women who never returned from the battlefield, veterans whose lives were cut short so that ours could be long.
The monument's flagpole is named after World War II hero and L.A. native Guy Gabbardon. Gabbardon is credited with capturing up to 1,500 Japanese soldiers during battles in the Pacific. Military veterans and their families paying homage to those who died while serving our country. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Councilman Wezar says a plaque with Corporal Gabbardon's name will soon be added at the El Sereno Monument. And another fallen service member's memory continues to live on through a marathon. It's the first of many more to come. Raja Goel has more.
He was a guy of, an officer of high character and integrity and highly respectful within the community and amongst all of his coworkers. Everyone misses him.
And in honor of fallen officer Tommy Scott, the Los Angeles World Airport Police Division recently hosted a 5K and 10K race in his memory. Scott was killed in the line of duty in 2005 after stopping a suspicious man in a vehicle near LAX, but his legacy will continue to live on.
I think it's a really good cause to come out and support, especially because from what I hear, he was just one of the best people ever.
The race started and ended at the Westchester and LAX Fire Station Number Five. Proceeds from the run will go towards the Tommy Scott Memorial Scholarship Fund.
His legacy through the employee associations are funding scholarships for other kids to take advantage of, to be able to go to college.
Officer Scott was the first airport police officer to be killed in the line of duty during the 59-year history of the force.
He's a great man of great character.
Officials say they will continue the race every year in memory of a man who was loved by many. I'm Raja Goel for L.A. this week. This year marks a decade since airport officer Tommy Scott's death. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti has signed the $8.6 billion city budget for 2015-2016, calling it the result of an unprecedented collaboration between the city council and the mayor's office. The council adopted the budget last week after adding roughly $11 million in public safety funding to the mayor's original proposal. Gil Reyes has the details.
As you can see, the sidewalk is full of bumps and cracks.
Silver Lake resident Vanessa Bell says she has to be extra careful when using the sidewalk.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. If you don't watch where you're going, you can trip over these. And if you want to have like a skateboard or a stroller or something, you're in trouble because you can't roll anything across these bumps.
But repairs could soon be arriving with millions of dollars set aside for sidewalk repairs and millions more reserved for tree trimming in the newly approved city budget. Joe Skyward looks forward to the trimming of overgrown tree branches which he says distracts drivers.
I go through Koreatown almost every day. It's really bad over in Koreatown. You don't even, there's stop signs that if I didn't know that they were there, or if people didn't know they were there, they could easily drive right through them.
The city's new budget reserves $8.6 billion in spending over the next fiscal year. Roughly $70 million will pay for police overtime, while roughly $4.5 million will purchase some 7,000 on-body cameras for LAPD officers in hopes of enhancing police accountability. Over at the L.A. City Fire Department, there's money to hire 270 new firefighters after years of hiring freezes. There's also cash to upgrade technology and aging equipment.
Relatively modest revisions in the mayor's budget. I think this has been a good collaborative team effort between the mayor and the council, and as a result, we have the best budget that we've had in many years.
A budget for the new fiscal year, which begins on July 1st. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
As mentioned, part of the budget plan reserves millions of dollars for sidewalk repairs. Gil Reyes reports on how a class-action lawsuit filed against the city has boosted that effort.
A landmark settlement could mean repairs for thousands of miles of broken sidewalks.
They've got a lot of, lot of stuff to do if they're gonna replace all the, all the stuff like this. This is really common, actually. So up and down this boulevard.
Mark Wagers says navigating through tricky sidewalks in Silver Lake can be difficult enough for your average pedestrian, but it's even tougher for moms with strollers and even worse for the disabled. In April, the city settled a class-action lawsuit filed on behalf of disabled residents. They claimed the rights to safe sidewalks were violated under the Americans with Disabilities Act. That settlement reserves $1.4 billion for sidewalk repairs citywide over the next 30 years. Now, city leaders say they know the general area where the sidewalk repairs are needed, such as this one on Silver Lake Boulevard, but community input is needed to determine if they missed any spots and also if new ones have popped up.
We know that there's more out there and we need everyone's input to get information on, and as far as the responsibility of who's responsible for paying for the sidewalk.
City Councilman and Public Works Chairman Joe Buscagino is referring to the possibility of having commercial property owners pay for repairs next to their land. That includes owners of apartment complexes, shopping centers, and office buildings. City leaders had scheduled a public meeting for Monday, June 1st, at City Hall to discuss the matter. In case you missed it, several more meetings are expected to take place throughout the month. In the meantime, Mark Wagers won't stop walking.
I just concentrate a lot on trying to make sure I don't stumble and fall over. I have fallen over, though.
In Silver Lake, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Under the settlement, the city must reserve $31 million per year over the next three decades to repair broken sidewalks. Well, it's part of L.A. Port's officials' plan to keep expanding the port in earth-friendly ways. An environmental summit, the second this year, focused on water quality. Anna Marcos has the details. Anna.
Yana, the good news is water quality at the port has improved over the last 40 years. The aim of the environmental summit was to provide a snapshot of the state of water health here at the port and to ask for input from residents and industry operators. Port officials say water quality at the port is better than ever.
20, 25 years ago, you wouldn't go in the water and you didn't see any sea lions. You didn't see any, you didn't see any, you know, you didn't see anything that was produced in the ocean. Today, you'll see starfish. Today, you'll see all the different sea life that's out there. You just take a boat cruise. The water has been significantly improved, but we still got a long way to go.
Water quality, a tough concern at this summit. The Port of L.A. has been working hand-in-hand with the Port of Long Beach to create a more sustainable port. The electrification of port terminals, the use of zero emissions vehicles, and constant monitoring of water and air quality have gone a long way in cleaning up the environment, as has working with industry operators to create more efficient shipping.
The less touches to a container, the less emissions that go in the air, the less opportunity for pollution in our waters.
One of the challenges with water quality at the port is the source of pollution often isn't in the water itself, but in the sediment and other sources of pollution.
In our case, our water's clean, but the sediment, which has been around forever, the port is over 100 years old, the sediment does have contaminants in it. And so those sediments could potentially affect water quality. And so we've got some hotspots.
Port officials are working to clean up the hotspots. At Cabrillo Beach, there are bird barriers to cut down on bird droppings, and the beach has been re-sanded. In other areas, the fish are getting transponders to track their movements and where they eat to help figure out where the contamination spots are.
Somebody goes out and catches a white croaker in the harbor, that white croaker has a load of bioaccumulated contaminants. So then the fisherman eats the fish and you, that load is going right up the food chain. So the bottom line here on this TMDL is human health.
I like what you've done, but is there some way to reengage the community?
Officials plan to make these summits a quarterly event as they continue to work with the community to make the port more earth-friendly. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Anna, thanks. The first environmental summit took place in January and focused on air quality. A victory for striking truck drivers at the Port of L.A. As Gil Reyes reports, they've landed jobs at a new company that promises full-time perks.
What a difference a week makes. Days earlier, some of these port truck drivers had marched the picket lines demanding full-time pay and benefits. Today, their wish has come true. They now have become employees of a new company called EcoFlow Transportation with its fleet of electric trucks.
EcoFlow is working, as you can see, these clean energy trucks, and also at the same time, they're giving us the opportunity to organize and become a union along with the Teamsters.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti helped negotiate the Port Solutions Agreement. Under the deal, EcoFlow has offered staff positions to 35 former freelancers from the company Total Transportation. That company was accused of misclassifying drivers as independent contractors to avoid fully paying them. Total Transportation denies this. Regardless, the new company EcoFlow will use only employee drivers, no independent contractors under the deal, and will also remain neutral should drivers consider unionizing.
It's bad for business for us to not have labor peace, whether it's dock workers or whether it's drivers. I want to make sure we have companies that are treating their employees well and vice versa. I want to make sure there's employees that are working and can work. So by creating this, it's a different model forward where we don't have to see ongoing pickets, where we don't have to see ongoing protests, where we don't have to see work slowdowns.
The mayor says he's negotiating with other trucking firms to reach similar deals. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
EcoFlow began operations in April. It currently has about 80 employee drivers. Well, L.A. is on the way to a bigger and better convention center as city officials gear up to give it a major makeover. Once again, we turn to Anna Marcos.
The L.A. Convention Center is about to take a leap into the future, all in an effort to make it a more productive economic engine for L.A.
One of the first things we found at our convention center was too small, that Chicago's over 3 million feet and Las Vegas is over 2 million feet, and we're down at 870,000 feet. So we are just a fraction of the size of the big players, and we're the second-largest city in America.
City leaders have called on architectural firms to design a bigger, better facility for under $350 million, and they now have the top three designs. The requirements, at least a million square feet of convention space, room for a hotel, and a design that's under budget. Officials estimate L.A. needs 8,000 hotel rooms to compete for convention dollars. It now has about 3,000.
It's literally hundreds of millions of dollars of lost business. San Diego would have 75 citywide conventions every year. We have 22 conventions every year.
All three plans include room for a hotel on the north end of the convention center, but this plan here would call for gutting the entire West Exhibit Hall, adding more rooms and a ballroom on top. This plan would build extra meeting rooms mainly along the Pico Corridor and the front of the convention center. And this plan would build up space in both the West and South Halls. It would build a ballroom and an entire front facade.
We're reaching out to the actual clients, the Auto Show, E3, some of our biggest conventions, to see what they think of it, and then some of the shows that we don't have.
City leaders have asked for public input on the designs at a meeting on June 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Room 403 at the L.A. Convention Center. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
And there's also plenty of changes taking place at LAX as airport officials usher in a new era of efficiency and sustainability. The loud humming of these huge machines fills the air inside the chiller room at LAX's new utility plant, providing air conditioning to all passenger terminals. And without getting too technical...
These are chiller units which are basically compressors. They compress refrigerant, which cools the water through a series of copper coils.
The chiller room is part of the airport's new energy-efficient central utility plant, providing heating and cooling to the entire airport. The $423 million project, which took four years to complete, replaces the 50-year-old plant and is considered to be the first of its kind.
This is gonna be the first sustainable utility plant. It's gonna reduce our carbon footprint. It was done in a green and environmentally friendly way, and it just showcases the kind of leadership we have here at Laowa, making L.A. one of the greenest and best cities in the country.
City and airport officials gathered for a grand opening ceremony. The new facility, which generates its own electricity, is 25% more energy-efficient than the original plant. This translates into an estimated savings of $7 million in gas and electrical costs. Now, check out this original control panel that they've used since the 1960s. Now it features switches, buttons, and these steam gauges. All of this now being run from the high-tech new control room. The state-of-the-art control room features large screen monitors and the latest technology, replacing these original dials and meters. So what does all this mean for passengers?
They can expect to be comfortable in the terminals.
Airport officials say the new plant brings them one step closer to modernizing LAX. The replacement central utility plant took more than 1.5 million man-hours to build and employed more than 300 construction workers. While the LAPD's Hollenbeck Division is doubling the amount of foot patrols in its area, as Gil Reyes reports, officers plan to cut crime one step at a time.
They're ditching their police cars and walking the beat. More officers patrolling on foot, extending the hand of friendship to residents and business owners near Mariachi Plaza.
Very enriching for our community. The kids will see police other than, oh, they're here because they've got a ticket, or there's a problem, or I'm in trouble. This way, they can see them. They can see that they're regular people.
The LAPD is doubling the number of foot patrols in Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, and El Sereno. Four new foot patrol corridors added. That makes eight total for LAPD's Hollenbeck Division. Officers want people to know them on a first-name basis.
It's kind of hard to do that when the police car's speeding by you, you know, and a lot of people want to talk to the police, but they just don't have that opportunity. At least this way, the officers will be on foot. They'll be approachable. We have seen it already in the existing foot beat areas that we have, where community members will come up to the officers and share with them problems that they're having.
Problems like street lighting, parking, and of course, crime. During the first three months of this year, violent crime jumped 26% citywide, much of that gang crime.
Unfortunately, there has been a small uptick in crime in the local area, but thinking ahead, planning ahead, using different models that could help. Our captains here and our hard-working men and women from our police department are gonna put something else on the streets that's gonna help continue to reduce our crime.
And more community policing without patrol cars. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
LAPD foot patrols are taking place on First Street, Caesar Chavez Boulevard, and six other nearby corridors. Paying tribute to our fallen heroes, teen poets get some words of wisdom from a published author, and L.A. firefighters show community members how they save lives. All these stories and more in City B. The U.S. flag was proudly displayed on cars and floats honoring U.S. war veterans during the 26th Annual Canoga Park Memorial Day Parade in the San Fernando Valley. Fire trucks made their way down the parade route as hundreds of folks lined the streets to watch the festivities.
I love Memorial Day. My dad was a veteran. We have a lot of veterans in our family, and I respect the veterans. Thank you.
I think Memorial Day is a wonderful, wonderful celebration for our troops and our country.
A teen poetry workshop was held recently at the Cypress Park Library, featuring Luis Rodriguez, who was selected last year by Mayor Eric Garcetti as the poet laureate of Los Angeles. Rodriguez said the goal of these workshops is to perform readings and talk to as many kids as possible to get them interested in reading.
I love books, and libraries were like my favorite places to go. And when you're a young kid and you don't got language and you're shy, you don't know what's going on, books are great, great. You know, they never attack you. They never jump on you. They never can tell you you're never gonna monitor anything. So I found books to be a really great refuge.
The workshop is part of a series of workshops presented throughout the L.A. Public Library system as part of the Los Angeles Youth Poet Laureate Contest. All teen poets are encouraged to enter. The winner will be named L.A. Youth Poet Laureate and win a book deal to publish their first book of poems. More than 100 fire stations opened their doors recently as part of Fire Service Day, giving the community a chance to recognize their firefighters, see what they do and how they do it. Firefighters at Fire Station 13 in Pico Union held several demonstrations highlighting their equipment and tools. Folks got a chance to see the jaws of life in action as firefighters showed them how they break into cars when someone is stuck inside. Community members also got to tour the inside of the firehouse.
This is just like our own home away from home, that we eat, we sleep, we cook, we clean, do the same things you do at your normal house. And it's a chance for them to kind of see what their community fire station's all about and what we do.
Firefighters always look forward to this day. It's a great day to have an open house, to have all the community come in, and we do special things across the city.
The L.A. Zoo recently observed the 10th anniversary of Endangered Species Day by hosting a two-day event featuring a variety of educational activities, highlighting efforts to save four unique species who are facing extinction, such as the western lowland gorilla, the California condor, the peninsula longhorn, and the mountain yellow-legged frog. Zoo guests learned about the importance of preventing the loss of those endangered animals. The action-adventure earthquake film San Andreas is shaking things up in theaters, and at the movie premiere in Hollywood recently, action film star Dwayne "The Rock" Johnson really got the crowd going in true Hollywood fashion. That's the focus of this week in tweets. The Rock posted a short video clip on Twitter of him making a blockbuster entrance, hanging off an LAFD fire truck while a helicopter swooped overhead. He wrote, "One of the greatest and most epic red carpet arrivals in the history of Hollywood. Thank you, LAFD. Thank you, Warner Brothers, but most of all, thank you, fans." Johnson, who plays a Los Angeles Fire Department helicopter pilot in the film, had a chance to hang out with the real-life members of the LAFD at Firehouse 27. He tweeted, "Very cool to spend some time with the boys before our big San Andreas premiere. An honor for me to represent these colors in our film." Johnson later retweeted a pic of him and L.A. Fire Chief Ralph Tarazza's posted by San Andreas Movie. It read, #SanAndreasStarDwayneTheRockJohnsonAndOurRealLifeFirstResponders. LAFD Conversation tweeted a pic of Johnson arriving on a fire truck, writing, "Honoring fellow first responders and helping The Rock with a star-worthy entrance." Their premiere was held at the Chinese Theater. And that's a look at this week in tweets. A jam session that can't be beat, an interactive performance of a children's classic, and a hands-on exhibit. All this in this week's Things to Do. Get moving and get inspired with a Latin jam session. Hit the dance floor with Andrea Rodriguez as she shows you the steps to Cumbia Dance, originating in Colombia's Caribbean coastal region and Panama. Make sure to wear comfortable clothes and shoes. Jam sessions are participatory and centered around movement and music. All jams are free and all ages and skill levels are welcome. Jam sessions begin on Saturday, June 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The open dance floor is from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. Live music will be playing all night long. The festivities take place at the Hacienda Heights Community Center at 1234 Valencia Avenue in Hacienda Heights. For more information, visit fourththeaters.org. Children's theater doesn't get much better than this. On Saturday, June 6th, take the really young ones, the kids, your neighbor's kids, or just yourself, out to see this very fresh and original production of Cinderella at Theater West. With the smart book and clever lyrics written by Lloyd J. Schwartz, along with the wonderful music composed by Michael Paul, you and your family will be in for an amazing, fun, and interactive musical treat. Cinderella asks for help from the audience, both to get information and help her discover what she really wants, and it seems to thrill the children in the audience until the very end. Children, if they choose, can ride horses with the prince, go to the ball, and even help them figure out who actually fits that glass slipper. Theater West is located at 3333 Coenga Boulevard West. Tickets for adults are $12 and for kids, $10. Learn more at theaterwest.org. And for something your child can really get into, check out the Skirball Center's Noah's Ark exhibit on display now. The permanent, award-winning children's and family destination is the talk of the town. Play, climb, build, explore, make believe, and make friends, all while exploring a floor-to-ceiling wooden ark filled to the rafters with whimsical animals, sharing a timeless story and together envision a better world. The Skirball Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. For more details, visit skirball.com/exhibitions. And that's a look at some things to do. And finally, from John Cho to Ming Na Wen, Asian Pacific Islanders in Hollywood have received much-needed support from three nonprofits making moves behind the scenes. As Gil Reyes shows us, these groups received special honors during Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrations at City Hall focused on providing more opportunities for emerging young talent in film and television. Honorees included the Coalition of Asian Pacifics in the Entertainment Industry, or CAPE. For years, CAPE has nurtured up-and-coming screenwriters with its new Writers Fellowship Program.
We will continue to persevere and continue with passion.
Congratulations.
Also honored, the folks behind the Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival. In April, the festival screened more than 150 mostly independent movies from Asian Pacific filmmakers, a group largely underrepresented in mainstream Hollywood. For that, Visual Communications received the Spirit of L.A. Award.
I'd like to dedicate this award to Linda Mabala, our former executive director who passed away 12 years ago. Your spirit continues to live with us.
Our final awardees began hosting local Korean talent competitions two years before American Idol. These days, the group known as Collaboration, with K, is also collaborating with stars like Randall Park from TV's Fresh Off the Boat, and John Cho from Star Trek and Selfie, to help shatter Asian Pacific stereotypes in pop culture.
One show became this huge nationwide movement, and having the roots in L.A. means so much to us, and to have this honor means so much to us.
City leaders say thanks for their City leaders say thanks for their contributions to the entertainment industry.
To provide billions of dollars to the local economy, the cultural and historical significance of what Asian-American Pacific Islanders bring to our region.
And will continue to bring if given the chance. At City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
A full rundown of special events on Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month can be found at culturela.org. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Cash in your water-thirsty lawn for a water-wise landscape. LADWP will give you $3.75 for every square foot of grass you replace with California-friendly landscaping. Goodbye, grass, hello, hardy shrubs, plants, and trees fit for LA's dry climate. Add a walkway made of decomposed granite. Cashing in your lawn equals money in your pocket and long-term savings on your water bill. Learn more at ladwp.com/waterconservation. Keep conserving today. It's Water Conservation the LA Way.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Sergeants, please call the members, give me their ETAs so that we can begin today's council meeting. I do want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield Fuentes, Crocorian. Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the Valley City Hall, Van Nuys City Hall. It's a pleasure to be here today. Today's date is Friday, June 5th. We, at this point in time, do not have a quorum, but we can start our business with presentations. So at this point in time, I'd like to defer to Mr. Bob Bloomingfield. The floor is yours, sir. Give him a round of applause. Yay, Bob!
All right, let me have the, if I can bring the folks up from the Valley Cultural Center, come on up and join me. Nora and Jim. What's that?
Gwen's walking around somewhere.
All right. We got the key folks here. Well, good morning, everybody. We are here today celebrating the 40th anniversary of the Valley Cultural Center. The Valley Cultural Center has been a tremendous resource, not just in the West Valley, but throughout the valley, throughout the city, for 40 years. Founded in 1975 to assist Wreckin' Parks Department in bringing arts and culture to the San Fernando Valley, the Valley Cultural Center has been at the forefront of culture, arts, and arts education. The Valley Cultural Center's free concerts in the park was launched back in 1975 under the guidance of their first chairwoman, educator Lou Breedlow. Today, the concerts are known as Concerts on the Green, and they're still presented free of charge and enjoyed by more than 140,000 Valley residents each year. It's a staggering number when you think about it. The Concerts on the Green has a permanent home at the Lou Breedlow Pavilion in the Warner Center Park. It was built on land that was donated by the Harry Warner family in 1967, and the pavilion was built for $1.3 million, and the city was an active participant in that with $1 million worth of Quimby funds. And Valley Cultural Center holds a 25-year lease on the pavilion from the LA Department of Wreckin' Parks, and the facility is used for a variety of cultural and arts activities. The center is actively engaged in community outreach, and their programs encompass diverse cultural, social, and artistic dynamics of the entire valley. As an important resource, VCC provides arts appreciation, music education, arts outreach for Valley students, as well as programs that support our senior population. The Cultural Center presents concerts, movies, Shakespeare in the Park, and something that everyone knows them for, the Fourth of July fireworks extravaganza. Yes, yay! That's, that's an event I support every year, my family goes every year, well before I was even in the city council. It is the premier event of the Fourth of July for, for the San Fernando Valley and for the West Valley. It's amazing, and I urge you all to come. In fact, it has an audience of 60,000 people gather in the park each year for that event. So when we talk about spectacular extravaganza, that's, that's no joke, 60,000 people. And funding comes from corporate sponsors, grants, government support, member donations. This year, the center is also participating with the Special Olympics Host Town and hosting a concert for the Olympic athletes. The year's summer session will open up this Sunday, June 7th, with the first-ever Valley Cultural Center World Music and Cultural Arts Festival. It's going to feature performers and artists from around the globe. The World Music Festival will also partner with Artists for Trauma, who are dedicated to enriching the lives of both civilian and military trauma survivors by pairing recovering patients with established artists from various disciplines. So doing, doing right by doing good. And I want to especially thank Jim Kinsey, the CEO and President and Director of Development. Let's give it up for Jim. Nora Ross, the Executive Director, and the Board of Directors chaired by Gwen Petrick. Yay! All of them have had tireless service to Los Angeles, especially for the San Fernando Valley. The VCC is a gem in the valley, and I'm proud to represent the area. Thank you for honoring their 40th anniversary, and I want to give you guys a certificate here to show that it's not just, not just me, the councilman you see all the time at your events, but this is signed by the entire city council and the mayor, because we all appreciate what you do in your 40 years of service. So everyone, join us on Sunday for the music festival and, and give it up for the Valley Cultural Center.
Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Englander wanted to say a few words. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I, I just have to rise and say thank you to the, to the Valley Cultural Center for what you, what you do for the San Fernando Valley. It's truly inspirational. I often, on Sunday nights, will sneak out of the 12th District. Sneak into the 3rd District and enjoy music under the stars with my family, and I've been doing it for many, many years and very involved in everything you guys do. Really, truly appreciate not just the experience, but bringing communities together, having people come out of their homes, enjoy their neighbors, for a cultural activity and experience that you just really couldn't get before you guys initiated and have really taken and the bar so high. The partnership and everything with Bob that you've done is just tremendous and needs to be replicated, because I'm always in awe. The crowds, the attendance, the different types of culture and activities that you bring, the musicians are phenomenal. It's just, it's really become a tradition in my household. So that's me in the disguise oftentimes, and my beach chair sitting there at the park and really enjoying it, so keep, that's right, no, thank you, thank you very much.
Jim, did you want to, please?
Just wanted to say a few quick words. Thank you so much for the city council, the entire city council. Thank you, Councilman Bloomingfield. And we want to give thanks to the Department of Cultural Affairs as well. We've had a partnership with the Department of Cultural Affairs for years, also with the Department of Recreation and Parks. It's, we're living proof that a public-private partnership does work. We've been here for 40 years, and I promise you, we will be here for 40 more years. I'm not so sure I will be here for 40 more years, but we will be. And thank you so much for this honor, and we look forward to serving our community. Thank you.
Now, we appreciate you. Let's give him another round of applause. Thank you so very much, Mr. Bloomingfield. As he's leaving, if I can call on Mr. Crocorian, if you're ready to proceed with our next presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and as we meet here in Van Nuys, it's appropriate, I think, to remember that so much of the San Fernando Valley's history has been made by successful women, powerful women, women who have influenced so many fields of endeavor, whether it's the arts, public service, business, education, and virtually everything else that matters in in the San Fernando Valley. It has been, for more than a century, so often it has been women who have shaped that history. And yet, surprisingly, until, we've had many different types of awards that have been given out in the San Fernando Valley to businesses, to community leaders, and so on. But until recently, no one had specifically created a San Fernando Valley Awards Ceremony recognizing the women that shaped so many of our communities. And this is really vitally important, because many of the names we know. But so often, as is the case in other areas, so often the people who most influence our communities are people who aren't recognized often enough. People whose names might not be known to the public, but who nonetheless, day in and day out, make a meaningful and often transformative difference in the lives of individuals. And by influencing individuals, they influence our entire city. So, this concept was first brought to the United Chambers of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley by Vaheed Corsent, who's here with us today, who realized that because there was no such event honoring San Fernando Valley women, the United Chambers of Commerce was going to change that, and they did. And on May 7th this year, the United Chambers honored seven San Fernando Valley leaders who have been an inspiration to so many people in our community. And I wanted to come here today to recognize the United Chambers for having created this opportunity for all of us to recognize these extraordinary women. So, first of all, let me say thank you to Vaheed Corsent and the United Chambers of Commerce for creating this event.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for all your service.
So, in addition to the members of the United Chambers of Commerce, there were representatives of the Encino, Winnetka, Canoga Park West Hills, and Universal City North Hollywood Chambers of Commerce involved in this. I want to especially recognize Courtney Hamilton of my office, who participated in creation of this event, as well as I saw Lynn Shaw earlier from Bob Bloomingfield's office. And Mr. Englander participated with his staff, as well as State Senators Hertzberg and Pavly, the Valley Cultural Center, who we just recognized, and many others who participated in this. And submitted, collectively, the community submitted nearly 50 submissions of nominees for this recognition. And out of those 50 submissions, the committee selected these seven honorees, most of whom you see before us today. And so, I just want to say a brief word about each of them, and then I'm going to turn it over to Vaheed to talk a little bit more about the United Chambers and what they've done. First, let me recognize Kathy Bloomingfield. Known to everyone in this chamber, first of all. Of course, Kathy is the Executive Director of the Discovery Cube of Los Angeles, which, if you haven't visited yet, you must go out and see. It's a 71,000-square-foot entertainment and education destination in the great 7th District. Truly, one of the important destinations, I think, for visitors to the San Fernando Valley to come see, and all of our families gained so much from it. Before joining Discovery Cube, Kathy was the CEO and President of the Liberty Hill Foundation, where she ran a $6-million budget focused on investing in community advocates and community progress. She's also well-known for her advocacy on health and environmental issues. Kathy Bloomingfield. Oh, there she is. There's her. Asta Chris is a community activist in the southeast San Fernando Valley and is largely personally responsible for the creation of Valley Glen. She was the president of that community's Neighborhood Association and has worked tirelessly as an advocate for greater mass transit options to the area. She also created a Neighborhood Adopt a Family program, which is responsible for bringing food, gifts, and support to dozens of needy families in her community. Asta Chris, where's that? Next, LAPD Officer Kelly Cueto has been with the department for 18 years. She's overseeing the LAPD Devonshire Cadets Program, which is a nonprofit dedicated to enriching the lives of youths for over eight, and she's been doing that for over eight years. She's helped raise and award over $60,000 in scholarships for the Devonshire Cadets. And for many of Officer Cueto's cadets, she's the only one or one of very few adults that they can look to for support and for inspiration. And it's really inspiring to note that many of her cadets have gone on to graduate high school who might not otherwise have. Six have earned college degrees. Six have joined the Army or the Marine Corps, and three have become police officers themselves. Officer Kelly Cueto. Michelle Miranda is the founder and Executive Director of Ruth Youth Build, a charter high school providing young adults in high-risk environments with an excellent education. The young adults who attend Ruth Youth Build are ones who, without it, might never have had an opportunity to even graduate from high school, let alone to go on to succeed. At Ruth Youth Build, they've had an opportunity to do so in an accepting and warm and welcoming environment. And since 2013, when the school was founded, 15 young people have graduated and 150 more are currently enrolled. Michelle Miranda. Gloria Pollack is not with us today. I think she's not with us today. But of course, everyone here knows that Gloria has dedicated her life to assisting others. As community liaison for the Gelb Group, Gloria is involved with LAPD's Jeopardy and PALS. On her own time, she's dedicated herself to One Generation, the Child Development Institute, and the Pierce College Foundation. During her decades of service, she's been recognized by, among others, Supervisor Mike Antonovich as Woman of the Year in 2013, and has been a recipient of the prestigious Fernando Award, the most important and prestigious award in the San Fernando Valley for community leadership and volunteerism. Gloria Pollack. And also familiar to everyone here, LAPD Captain Maureen Ryan, formerly the captain of Valley Traffic, joined the Police Department in 1988. And since then, she's been an instructor for many of the department's schools and helped to train her fellow officers on important issues such as sexual assault, detective work, and supervisory skills. She's trained other organizations how to provide support to the victims of rape and sexual assault as well. After being promoted to captain, she became Patrol Commanding Officer of Topanga Division, where she became the first female captain to open a new division in LAPD history. After Topanga Division, Captain Ryan served as Patrol Commanding Officer at Devonshire Mission and, most recently, at Valley Traffic Division. In January, we lost her at Valley Traffic, and she again became the Topanga Division Area Commanding Officer. Captain Maureen Ryan. And finally, although she also, Dr. Maltese is not... Dr. Maltese is not... okay. She was not able to make it today, but Dr. Joan Maltese is the co-founder and Executive Director of the Child Development Institute, a nonprofit whose mission is to help all children to reach their full potential by supporting relationships and environments that shape early development. She's a clinical psychologist with over 30 years of experience in her field, and Joan has helped countless children and families play, grow, and learn more about their own childhood development. So, please help me to recognize seven extraordinary women who have contributed so much to the San Fernando Valley and all of the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to invite Vaheed. Vaheed's right behind you. Come on up, Vaheed. Come on up. I'd like to invite Vaheed up.
Before you start, I have Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander would like to say a few words.
Hey, thank you very much. I just got to rise and thank the UCC and all the chambers for bringing together such an incredible group of women that I've had the pleasure of working with. If you think about collectively, the lives that you've changed and just rattling off only a brief snapshot of the organizations from law enforcement and healthcare to at-risk youth, to seniors, the disabled, you've touched virtually every aspect of lives here in the San Fernando Valley. You've changed not tens of thousands, but probably hundreds of thousands of lives over collectively, all of your years in volunteerism and reaching out. I mean, it's just incredible. And it reminds me of the philosopher that talked about leadership and that he went to his students and said, "Go to the edge." And they said, "No, we're scared. We will fall." He said, "Go to the edge." They said, "We're scared." So, he brought them to the edge, and then he pushed them. But they didn't fall. They flew. And they've changed lives. And what you've done is you've really inspired so many to get involved and do so many other things as well. I'm just in awe. And it's, I wouldn't say long overdue. This is a great new tradition that I, I'm just so proud that Vaheed and the chambers and everybody got together to do. And Paul Krikorian, thank you so much for stepping up and bringing them here today and everything you've done in your office and staff to help put this together, because you guys are all heroes. The women of the San Fernando Valley and what you've done to change lives. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Back to you, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. With that, I want to present this recognition on behalf of all of the City Council members of the city of Los Angeles, and especially those of us in the San Fernando Valley who benefit so much from the service, week in and week out of the United Chambers of Commerce. But especially, I want to thank you and recognize you, Vaheed, for this. As Mr. Englander so correctly said, not just something that's long overdue, but the beginning of a new tradition that will last, hopefully, for generations to come. Vaheed, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Krikorian. It wasn't just me. This idea sparked a little bit over a year ago, where my wife and I were talking about different women in the Valley who've inspired me. And some of them, we ended up recognizing, including Gloria Pollack, Joan Maltese, and Captain Ryan, who, I mean, individuals I've worked with over the years. And so, we wanted, I wanted to come up with an idea that celebrated women who inspired not just women, but inspired me and mentored me and got me to where I am on different boards and a successful member of the community and a successful business owner. And these individuals standing behind me have theoretically or figuratively have stood behind me for many years. Maybe some of them don't know it, like Kathy Bloomingfield. Maybe they don't know it because it wasn't them. It was somebody else. But I've heard them speak. Asta Chris, my wife comes from Valley Glen, and she remembers that movement of creating a city. And not many people can say they founded a city. So, it's really important to remember that women, although not very much representative in the City Council, where we only have one, they're a huge part of our community. They're a huge part, not just of our business community, but our nonprofit community, our social groups. They stand behind not just other women, but stand behind other men and help us become better individuals and better members of the community. And this event also would not have been possible without staff members from Councilmember Englander, Krikorian, and Bloomingfield for giving me the opportunity to walk into the United Chambers Board Meeting last June and say, "I have these three council offices that want to work with us on this project. Let's do it." And they were there the whole time through, especially Courtney and Lynn, to get this done and make it a successful event. So, thank you to everyone, Mark, Jenny, Les, everyone who was a part of this event. And I hope that we continue to do this every year. And I hope that we see all of our council members there next year, because these women touch lives all across the city, not just the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum at this time. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonnebuscanos, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Corret, Krikorian, Labonch, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves. Fuentes seconds. Next?
Committee resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corret moves. Englander seconds. Next?
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Items 1, A, C, and D to June 19th, Item 1B to June 9th, and Item 2 to June 9th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Items 3 through 5 are items which public hearings have been, have items noted for public hearing.
Okay, cards, not cards, members. I don't see any members on the queue. Why don't we prepare to vote on those items? Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There is a card on Item 3.
Let's hold that.
Sally, it's Items 4 and 5 for voting.
Wait a minute. I thought we already had hearings on these.
Oh, yes. My mistake, Mr. President.
Okay, so we do vote on...
Yes.
We can vote on Items 2 through 5?
Items 3 through 5.
Okay, so let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where on the agenda?
Items 6 through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? It's my understanding we have cards on all of those items?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so we'll hold those items and move to our next presentation, which would be Mr. Fuentes. The floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. I have the pleasure today of recognizing an amazing young man. A.J. Valverde, here, standing to my left, is one of a handful of California, not Los Angeles, California students nominated to attend the 2015 Congress of Future Science and Technology Leaders in Boston. A.J. is a 10th grader at Silmar High School and a proud Spartan. He was nominated by Buzz Aldrin, an American hero, also a science director of the National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists. He was selected based on his academic achievement, leadership potential, and passion for science and technology. As you can imagine, his favorite subjects in school are science and math. And he has taken all honors courses, including advanced placement courses in chemistry, and maintains a 3.5 GPA. After high school, he'd like to attend Caltech or Harvard University and has aspirations to be an engineer specifically in robotics. The Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists created the Congress, an honors-only program for high schoolers passionate about science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM subjects that we all know are so critical to our future. The event is meant to inspire, motivate, and direct the top students in the country to continue in their STEM fields. As always, colleagues, it's a real honor for us to be able to honor people in these hallowed halls, but in particular, for me to honor young people who are the future to not just this great city or state, but to the country. And so, today, A.J., we want to wish you well. And we have a little memento here to recognize all of your achievements. And we're, I'm honored that you're representing Silmar. Congratulations. Let's look right here. Mom, get over here so we can see you. There we go. There you go. Let's see, Mom. Take your, yeah, there you go. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much for inviting me here today. I am at a loss for words. So, all I can say is thank you.
You are very, very welcome. Give him a round of applause.
Mr. President, we have, if it's okay, to continue on. I've got another presentation. I'd ask Ms. Martinez to join me. Today, we are also honoring Pacoima Charter School. Where is Pacoima Charter? Come on over, Sylvia. Bring the gang with you. Colleagues, this morning, we just honored the amazing achievement of a young person in my council district. We also would like to honor this impressive charter school named Pacoima, formerly Pacoima Grammar and Elementary School. They are celebrating their centennial, 100 years, as one of the greatest little schools that ever could, with amazing alum, including Ms. Nuri Martinez. Today, we are joined, give her a big round of applause. This morning, we are joined by Sylvia... This morning, we are joined by Sylvia Fajardo, our principal, Maureen Clark, Assistant Principal, Sal Viescas, another Assistant Principal, Robert Worthman, and Veronica Rojas. Pacoima Charter has been a leader in our community. As I mentioned, it's been around for 100 years. It has provided quality education and real leadership and example to a lot of young people to hopefully make a better future for themselves and their families. And we know that they are helping bridge that gap each and every day by leadership and by example. Staff and administrators, when the going got tough a few years ago, never threw in the towel. In fact, in 2003, this school converted to a charter school. And since then, has more than doubled its API scores. I'm grateful to the staff and the administrators for all of their achievement, for their leadership, their growth and their success. And while it's easy to recognize just these folks, there is a tremendous amount of people back in Pacoima that want to make sure that this school succeeds, including the parents. And they are a vital part of their success. And this administration recognizes that. The programs that they've got there, as I mentioned, are, are very important to the success of our city. And I am honored to introduce our councilwoman, proud alum from Pacoima Elementary, Nuri Martinez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. And thank you for including me in this wonderful presentation. So it was 30 years ago, I'm going to date myself, 30 years ago that I graduated from Pacoima Elementary School. And back then, I remember folks telling my mom that they thought they were, you know, my parents were making a mistake sending me to Pacoima Elementary School. Because unfortunately, you know, there was that stigma about the community and about, you know, some of our schools. But I can't, I, I have to say this. I fell in love with politics, not only because my parents were so active in the community, but it was thanks to Mr. Glitzman's class in the fifth grade, where we had a mock presidential election in class, that it was my first civics class that I understood what elections were, what a president was. And it was the first time that I fell in love with, with civil, civil service and why civic involvement was so important in my family. And I want to say, you know, there are, there are an enormous amount of educators in the northeast San Fernando Valley that I think deserve recognition every single time we make a presentation. To the wonderful women that were recognized by the United Chamber of Commerce, Sylvia Fajarda, my friend, deserves so much credit for turning this little school around and making it a real pillar of, of Pacoima. You really do, friend. You are wonderful. She's not only a product of this community, but she believes so much in her little school. And it's thanks to her and her team that you have given so many families in Pacoima such hope. And our little school has made such tremendous strides, thanks to you. And to your wonderful thing. So thank you very, again, I'm just such a proud product of the northeast San Fernando Valley, my community Pacoima, and my little school Pacoima Elementary. Keep doing wonderful things for children. Congratulations in your 100-year anniversary, and let's celebrate 100 more. Thank you very much.
Very good. So on behalf of Council Districts seven and six, we would like to present to you this little memento. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you very much for this honor. In case you didn't know, Pacoima Elementary is situated right in the heart of Pacoima. We are next to the San Fernando Gardens Housing Project. So most of our students, most of our, close to 1,500 students come from the projects. In 2003, our Academic Performance Index, our API, was 338, which is pretty much the lowest you can get. We were also one, according to the LA Times article, we were one of the worst 100 schools in California. And since then, since becoming an independent school, our, we are now considered an eight out of a scale of from one to 10 in similar schools in California. So we've grown from a one to an eight in this period, period of time. And, and in addition to that, you know, we have a very active parent community, and our children are thriving. And I want to take this opportunity to thank councilmembers Nuri Martinez and Felipe Fuentes for all their support. They have been very supportive to us and, and they're advocates of charter schools. And thank you for this honor on behalf of our staff member, parents, and our children. Thank you so much.
Again, congratulations, and let's proceed, Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we reconsider item two from Wednesday's agenda, Council File 14-1194 regarding protests, hearing the protests and ordinance for first consideration of the 2015-2016 Prop K assessment.
Okay, let's, uh, let's vote to suspend the rule. I guess suspend the rules first. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Now, we're going to vote on the actual reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'd like to ask that the matter be continued until Wednesday, June 10th.
Without objection. We're going to move now to item six. On item six, I have a few cards. I have Mr. Spindler and Mr. Walsh. Please come forward. Mr. Spindler, you're right there, so come on forward. I'm going to start moving, come on.
Yes, I know we're in a hurry. It's Friday.
Stay on the subject.
Oh, yes, I know. Okay, the rent escrow program, REAP, rhymes with rape. You've been raping these homeowners. But today, freedom, emancipation, CD9, CD10, CD14. Buildings are free. Landlords are free to get the money that they've worked so hard for. They've been waiting for the rent, but you've been stealing it. They've been crying out on 131 East 85th Street. "Where's my money? I'm bankrupt. Help me. I'm bankrupt. Herb, stop stealing my money." So please, give them back the money retroactively for the last year. One minute.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. We've talked about REAP before. The landlords have caused a lot of problems, and now they haven't fixed up the building to code. And now the rent is going to the city, not to the landlord. And I'd just like to point out, my face isn't here, it says item HC. Why don't you show our face? Why? Because we're garbage and you're important? Look, look, everyone, you can't see my face, you can't see me. Now you can see me. And now you don't. Why, why? Why don't you just play fair? Why do you always have to kick us in the balls?
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
We'll go to item eight. Item eight, I have Donna Pierman. Donna Pierman, please come forward. Miriam, come forward. Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman passes. Okay, Donna Pierman, Donna, where are you? Okay, Miriam, are you here? Let me move on to Wayne. Spindler, for now. We may want to look out for the two of them. Mr. Spindler?
Donna. Okay, well, if Donna Pearlman were here, but she's probably been accosted by the police officers outside. Warner Brothers is giving a gift. And the only reason they're giving this gift of these speed signs is to help the LAPD write those moving violation tickets and those speed traps off the 5 freeway, off the 134 and the 101 that goes through Forest Lawn Drive. This is not nice. This is vicious. This is vicious stuff. So say no to this gift. Take down those signs and stop assisting illegal traps and speed traps in violation of the California Vehicle Code that's occurring on that street, which leads to the 101 and the 5. Warner Brothers, you frigging suck.
Okay, why don't we try Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes. I don't see Donna. Don't see Miriam. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
We will now move to item nine, just. Okay, item nine. Mr. Herman? Item nine? Miss, I, I understand. Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler, please come forward. Please come forward.
Yeah, um, like an elf, A-L-F, I want to talk about the Commemorable Independence Day for a sum to utilize $2,535 from the Council District Four portion of Mr. Ryu, R-Y-U, from the Street Furniture Revenue Fund, AAA flags and banners manufactured by the company to indicate that Ryu's name suggested the idea. Ru, ru, ru. District Four, as I read off this agenda, item number nine. And again, Mr. LaBonde, you're not here to satisfy the idea.
Stay on the subject.
On the paper, sir. And as I close into my one minute, I remind you that, again, thank you, R-Y-U. Ru, ru.
Stay on the subject. I won't warn you again, Mr. Herman. Okay, Mr. Walsh, you, you're up on this one? I got you. I put you last because you, I couldn't find you and Miriam. Okay, Mr. Walsh, item nine.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential, where you can see my face. What this is, and is buying of US flags. You mean after, this city's been around for over 100 years. You don't have enough spare United States flags that you are spending, as it says here, $2,535 to buy flags from AA flag. I said flag, not fag. Who said I said fag?
Just stay, stay on the subject.
I said AA flag and banner. All this money? And ladies and gentlemen, you can't see my face because Channel 35?
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject, okay. Ms. Pierman, followed by Ms. Fogler. Item nine.
She seemed to go through this awfully fast. I wish she could have gave me time for its number seven and eight. Shit. Okay, um, okay, let's talk about the veterans, the patriotism of 9/11. Our veterans have given a lot to us. They've given, uh, some of them have given their very lives. And they've been giving the, a lot of them have given disabled. So I think this is great that we're doing the United States flag along that Glendale-Hyperion Bridge. When you do things right, I also tell you when you do things right. So I'm not also an angry white person. So I think this one's a good one. And I'm sorry I didn't get to speak on, I didn't get to speak on my speed bombs, which is wonderful for you to do.
Oh, now you're not going to do that, are you? Stay on item nine.
And I wanted to speak against the buses. But unfortunately, you'll never get to hear about it because you went through too fast. So this one's a good one, the patriotism of 9/11, because we got to remember our veterans, our armed forces, and remember our police. These are the people that gave up our, gave up their lives. And I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing, to do the flags. So, um, I'll, I'll take the cost for this one. This is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Fogler, come on forward. Miriam? Come on. Well, just say something good about it. Come on.
Well, I like to see the flags. That's the main thing. And I like to see freedom blowing in the air with the flags. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to item 10. Okay, Ms. Fogler and Ms. Pierman, come on back. Mr. Herman? Ms., well, on 10, Miriam. So you pass, Donna passes, Mr. Herman?
Mr. Wasson, CD10, and Mr. Weezer, who's not in his seat, relative to amending prior council action for May 12, 2015, regarding the adoption of general plan amendment to a zone in?
Stay on the, uh, speak at the microphone, please, Mr. Herman, please.
You're racist. Don't even put me on, on camera because you're afraid of what I'm saying.
No, 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 speak to the subject.
I am.
And speak from where you are. Okay, speak to the subject. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll go into Nuri mode for one minute. It sucks when you interrupt the speakers when they're talking about you, Mr. Herman. And Weezer, relative to amending the prior council action of May 12, 2015 amendment. So there's 16, 13 seconds to go. Amend the council action, May 12, Nuri mode, relative to the adoption of Mary Plan Amendment and Zone. Six, five, four, three.
Thank you, okay. Sergeants, have him sit in his seat. You have, if you come to speak, you speak at the podium. I will indicate to each and every one of you that there is a malfunction with the camera, and we are putting a request to have it repaired. So that's what's wrong with the camera today. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, now we're going to go to item 11. Donna, Donna Pierman and Miriam Fogler, please come forward. Item 11.
This is awful. This one's an awful one. Why doesn't Governor Brown care about Beverly Jordan or her family? Let Governor Brown do something for these, for the victims. These liberal communist party should help victims of violence, not criminals. Unless he's innocent, why should I care about him? I don't know what happened with this awful brutal murder or why he was thinking of reversing and letting this person go. But personally, I don't care about Eric Lewis. I more care about the victims of violence like Beverly Jordan. So I'm hoping that you're against Governor Brown's letting somebody, people to go. Because we don't need to let murderers go. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam, please come forward. Miriam Fogler, item 11.
Yeah, Governor Brown has somewhat done a mediocre job, but in this one, he's okay on that. But the problem is, he, he kind of doesn't know which way, which shoe he goes on, which foot. So I guess he realized that it would have been a big political mistake. So that's why he did this. And this is why the citizens- So that's why he did this, and this is why, uh, the citizens in California need to be trained about how to, uh, to make, uh, be able to defend themselves, because obviously the victims are not getting hurt. It's only the criminals and the victims and the law biases are targeted, and it's gotta stop. And the gun confiscation sent by Obama has gotta stop, because we, because we need to stop this kind of violence. This is an example of why we need, uh, rights to have our, our guns and not have Obama interfere.
Stay on the subject. Thank you. Thank you, Miriam. Okay. Uh, Mr. Herman, Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Walsh.
We're talking here regarding a condition that characterized people who have been incarcerated. Some who have a below-average intellectual ability who've been incarcerated, and I find it unconstitutional, because people deserve to understand that, what did you say, bitch? Krikorian?
No, you're off the subject even before you said what you said.
Of communicating more so and learning is that I disagree with this parolee. He should be let free, given freedom under the Freedom Act. Yeah. Yeah, Krikorian, because the bottom-
No, look, I told you to stay on the subject. No, then, thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Let me have Mr. Spindler. Let me have Mr. Spindler. Sergeants, have a conversation with him. Mr. Herman, if you get up again, I'm gonna have you removed. Okay, Mr. Spindler? From the podium. At the podium, Mr. Spindler, please. Item 11.
Yes, uh, the parole board made the right decision in number 11. Isn't it time we forgive and forget? Isn't it time for those that have sinned to be released? Yes, the parole board had the guts to take a chance on this man who did a little boo-boo. Yes, it's a killing, but you only lived once, and it's time to forgive. Read the Quran, Jews, Christians, read the Bible.
Stay on the subject.
I am staying on the subject.
No, you're not. No, you're not. Okay, your, your time is done. Mr. Spindler, thank you. You refused to stay on the subject, and he is, uh, again, in a, okay, now he's still, Mr. Spindler, one more time. One more time. Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject. Item 11.
Here's what happened. Beverly Jordan was brutally murdered. Man was convicted and sentenced. We don't have, uh, we have a death penalty, but he wasn't given the death penalty in this state. Uh, then this man, Eric Lewis, was paroled. Now, remember, this board of parole, these are all political appointees of the governor and other politicians. Now, the governor did the right thing, and the governor has to sign off on all paroles. He didn't, uh, did not sign off on this. He did the right thing, and we have to put this man back into prison. I mean, just, uh, two days ago, a, a guy just got out on, on parole, murdered his wife and what, his three-month-old baby? There are just too many people on parole because of limp-dick liberals like you, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, uh, let's prepare, let's, no, no disruption from the audience. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, is my understanding, we have a presentation?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a, a mix-up in the morning, but we're so happy that Maria is here with us, um, this morning for a very special, special recognition. It's my honor to recognize Maria Sheets upon her retirement after 17 years of service to the City of Los Angeles. Maria cares deeply about the city and our communities here in the San Fernando Valley. In 1998, Maria joined the City of Los Angeles as a management assistant with the Department of Housing Rent Enforcement Division. Here she handled alleged violations of rent civilization ordinance and worked closely with landlords and tenants to resolve conflicts. Over time, Maria served the city in various capacities and gained the respect of city employees and community members. Since taking office, I've gotten to know Maria so much more in her role as the Assistant Director of the Office of Beautification. In this role, Maria provides resources to ma, to many of us with cleanups and has been a very, very instrumental part of the office in helping us with cleanups throughout our city. She is a dedicated public servant, um, and has very, uh, been dedicated as one of our closest allies, um, in putting out community cleanups and helping other, uh, communities, uh, organize their own community cleanups around my district. She's always ready to lend a hand, and you will always find Maria helping at a cleanup at various elementary schools through our Council District Six and along the Los Angeles River in the Sepulveda Basin. And she provides quick response to ensure that graffiti is removed in a timely manner. In fact, it is no surprise that Maria has received numerous awards, and she continues to serve as a member of the Steering Committee of the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs. Dedicated community members make a difference in my district, and today I'm so proud to recognize Maria for her dedication to our district, to our city, and to our community. With that, I'm so proud to introduce Maria Sheets to say a few words.
Good morning, um, council members and leaders of the City of Los Angeles, um, our council president, um, and to all the council members of our great city. Um, Council Member Martinez, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak in front of you all and to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve our city with your support, with the resources of all our departments and the community groups. Um, it's 17 years of service to the City of Los Angeles is a great part of my life. I've always had this goal in my mind to serve the City of Los Angeles, and when I joined in 1998, I thought that was really the reality of my dream. And unbeknownst to me, that was just the beginning. Um, I had the pleasure of working with city leaders, with civic leaders, the community groups who really seek out the help of our city. They look up to our leaders, asking for help, for guidance, and to represent them. And I believe that our council members have done that. You are serving our constituents very well, providing them with the resources, and I'm happy to be a part of that. And, um, as I look forward to retirement, I would like to thank God above all, in the name of His dearly beloved Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, and through the intercession of our blessed Virgin Mary, for allowing us all to help the City of Los Angeles grow. And to all our city leaders, may God be with you, may you be safe, and may you continue to bring our city to greatness. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you very much.
So on behalf of the LA City Council and Mayor Garcetti, signed by all of us, congratulations on your retirement, and we look forward to many more times with Maria as a civic leader. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, Mr. Weezer isn't here. Can we remove, or did you? Uh, yeah, that's-
You want me to go around?
Yes. And then we'll recognize, uh, Mr., uh, O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just didn't want Maria to get completely away before-
Maria, could you come back?
They're taking pictures now, so I hate to bring them back for that, but-
Now, here she comes. She wants to hear from you.
Uh, first of all, Ms. Martinez, thanks for bringing Maria up for this recognition. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. Um, you were always the go-to person whenever I needed help, just as an activist in Glassell Park, before I even started with the Office of Eric Garcetti back in the day. And then when I did, all of the incredible assistance you gave, uh, myself, the staff, and continue to do so since I've been council member. Uh, you are an outstanding city employee, setting the standard for everyone else, uh, in your entire department, and you have made a huge, huge difference, uh, in the streets across the whole city, uh, for the better. So on behalf of all the neighborhoods, all of the constituents that we serve, uh, you have made a huge impact in your profession while serving the City of Los Angeles so admirably and in such an exceptional way. So Maria, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your years of service, and I hope that others are watching this and will hold you up as the example to follow, uh, in public service. You are the example. So thank you so much for 17 years of incredible service to the City of L.A.
I would like to thank you for your validation, for recognizing that my hard work, commitment, and really the pride that I have in my work speaks and is noticed, and, um, I have served the people well. Um, it, it is, it is in my heart to touch those who ask for help and help them. And so whenever I get a call late in the evening, in the weekend, I do my best. I try to connect with the people and the resources that I have in my disposal through the coordination of our city staff. It's the relationship that you build along the way that will really bring you forward to success, and I keep that in my heart. I have respect for everyone here, the civic city and business leaders who have been engaged in, in my service, and I applaud everyone. I'm only as good as everyone around me. And thank you for that, for your support. When we ask for your help, when we meet with your staff, they let us know what they want, what the community needs, and we work with them. So it's really a very, you would say, a wholeness of collaboration within city department and the council offices and the people, and I thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Now we're gonna move to item 12, item 12. We have, uh, Donna Pierman and Miriam on item 12. And Mr. Spindler on item 12.
Thank you very much for doing Farmer's Market.
What do we do without you? So anyway, uh, I, I think Farmer Market sounds like a good idea, because I like to go on that south, uh, south, uh, lawn east right after the city council meeting, and I like to see those things that's over there. But in terms of Wayne Spindler-
Oh, thank you very much. What do we do without you?
Stay on the subject.
I am thanking you for the city col, uh, Farmer's Market, actually. It's actually the same words whether you say in this voice or what you say in that place. It's very same thing. I'm thanking you for building the Farmer's Market because I think that's a good idea. I like to go someplace after city council, maybe after taking two hours going all the way after city council.
Stay-
Thank you.
Stay on the subject. Thank you. Miriam? Item 12, Miriam Fogler.
Farmer's Market's an outstanding idea, because after all, we don't have much to eat, eat here at the, uh, city hall, so that's a very good source right across the street. So I think it's very, I think it's good. So I just want to comment on one, one, thou shall not murder.
Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler, you passed? All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr., uh, Fuentes, we're gonna move to item seven, and I have cards. Maybe we take the cards first and then you, okay, we're on item seven. I'd like to call, uh, Donna Pierman, Miriam Fogler, and Mr. Herman, please come forward.
Thank you very much for letting me get to speak on seven. Thank you. So anyway, we should worry about the local buses in the San Fernando Valley. This is, uh, talking about high-speed rail, because I'm worried about the local buses in San Fernando Valley. Buses that only run an hour, like Satacoy or Woodman bus or the Soto bus. What about studies on the local buses, on how to make the buses so we can get across a one, uh, like from, um, Reseda over to, uh, Tarzana? Uh, lights on Ventura Boulevard and Reseda have trouble, so that we, I, we miss, uh, me and my boyfriend miss the 240 bus going to Reseda. But why do you want to spend all this money on this high-speed rail, which most people don't even want this high-speed rail alignment in the San Fernando Valley? Because you're talking about going from one spot to really far away, but in the meantime, uh, all the people who want to go in smaller spots are taking the buses that are not going to be running very well because you're spending all this money on high-speed rail. I'm against it.
Thank you. Miriam? Followed by Mr. Herman.
Needs to be totally halted, this, the bullet, because all it's gonna do, they're gonna take out the city San Fernando's, uh, historical sites. I was speaking to somebody yesterday, and it's not looking good, and they're gonna, the, the city of San Fernando is going to sue the State of California and put a halt to this thing, and I think we need to do the same period. Needs to be put into the grave, and the bond money needs to be returned to the State of California to be used for some of other products, essential projects. This is so non-essential. It's so pathetic. Um, it needs to be, uh, scr, uh, scratched. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Herman, are you on this item? Start his time.
In regards to item seven, folks, what purpose of studies or regulations for our neighborhoods or in our communities, if the general plan does not appropriately set standards for these studies related to the proposed California high-speed rail alignment in the San Fernando Valley, how would it impact our business and communities? Protecting our neighborhoods from incompatible-
Incompatible, Mr. Krikorian?
Oh, and the basis of issues planning regarding to the-
Choo-choo!
Speed rail, proposed California rail alignment. -speed rail-proposed California rail alignment. According to the resolution here, it says, "On key issues, including but not limited to water quality, noise, systemic," or in layman's terms, Mr. Corian, "earthquakes, and tunneling impacts to the neighborhoods that you will eventually mess up." Kind of like pumping oil out of the ground.
No, you're not on the subject. Stay on the subject.
We're digging tunnels, sir. And I'm talking about the-
Stay on the subject.
So, such capital improvement projects have become a disaster, not to include the American Disability Act, Mr. Big Ears, all of you listening, for a single obligation to improve the American Disability Act for transportation. You failed, all of you. How dare you stand here and not consider the negative impact for this resolution for rail alignment in San Fernando Valley? Choo-choo!
Thank you. Your time is up. Ms. Ann Jobb, Kelly Rose, Catherine Del Sun, Cindy Bloom. Good after, good morning, I think it still is.
Good morning. My name is Ann Jobb. I'm the president of the Selmar Neighborhood Council, but I speak for myself. I'm here to thank our councilmember Felipe Fuentes for his efforts on our behalf regarding the high-speed rail. I want to thank Ms. Martinez for joining with him. I feel like, I know that they have our best interest at heart. And I'm personally not taking a position on the high-speed rail myself. I don't know enough about it, but I feel confident that we have good representation on this council, and I wanted to take this opportunity to say that, as well as to say to the rest of you who may not be as impacted by these rails as we will be up in the northeast Valley. Know that you can count on us. When you have something impacting your community that doesn't affect ours, know that we are a city, we're in this together, and that you can call on us if you're in San Pedro, that it cannot, we cannot be divided against ourselves, against each other. We have to see this together. And finally, if you can put it underground, once it comes to the communities, I think that that is something that we really, really need to look into, is to have it become a subway that doesn't go 200 miles an hour when it hits the populations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, again, if I could get Kelly Rose, Catherine Del Sun, Cindy Bloom, David DePinto, and Dawn Jacobs? Go right ahead.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kelly Rose. I am a property owner, business owner, parent, and voter in Los Angeles. Currently, I live in Lakeview Terrace, and I wanted, I'm here in support of this motion today. Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes and its, and other supporters. District 7 is only the first in Los Angeles whose, whose communities will be desecrated by the HSR construction. The recently released SAA report did not nearly acknowledge the public opinion or sensitive aspects of our community. By passing this motion, you are making a statement to the High-Speed Rail Authority that Los Angeles is paying attention. For those on the council who support high-speed rail as a whole, either politically or personally, I urge you and/or your staff to attend Tuesday's board, rail board meeting in downtown Los Angeles and hear us. Hear how your constituents truly feel about this project. I have a little more time. So, basically, I want to tell you that this is the first, we are the sample subjects for how this, how Los Angeles is going to respond to the high-speed rail. And we are not happy. And I understand that it was voted in in 2008, but now that today it's here, and it's potentially going to destroy the little urban aspects we have left dividing communities like San Fernando and Pocono, which I'm sending my, my daughter's going to Fenton Charter in Pocono this year. And, you know, we're all together. So, by supporting this motion, it is a start. It is a big start, and I'm very grateful, but it is only a start. And we have to take another look. And I understand that Brown has a lot of supporters, and I'm not discounting you for wanting to stay on his good side for certain reasons, but this is not the way. Water, not rail. Thank you.
Okay. There's Ms. Del Sun. Again, followed by, do we have Cindy Bloom? And David?
Go right ahead. Okay, thank you, sir. Again, my name is Kathy Del Sun. I live in the community of Shadow Hills. And I wish to speak in appreciation of Councilmember Fuentes, our local representative, in supporting a recommendation for advanced environmental studies for impacts due to proposed California high-speed rail routes in the San Fernando Valley. As a longtime resident of the community of Shadow Hills, I hope that all councilmembers will support this important measure. Residents of the San Fernando Valley feel they are under assault by high-speed rail. In particular, we are asking equal consideration. The proposed SR14 corridor has been studied for seven to eight years, whereas the eastern corridor routes have only been under consideration since the spring of 2014, with the residents in the northeast San Fernando Valley only informed of these routes in August of last year. Okay? The E2 route in particular will truly devastate the communities of Shadow Hills and Lakeview Terrace and all other surrounding communities who use the Hanson Dam Recreation Area. The E2 route proposed, proposes putting high-speed rail above-grade structure across the ecologically sensitive Tohanga Wash, and remove homes and impact our local businesses. Tunneling through our mountains also jeopardizes our water sources. We have a large water aquifer under the Tohanga Wash. But anyway, I would really urge you to please support us in our efforts to prevent the devastation of our communities. And thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Cindy Bloom, David DePinto, Dawn Jacobs. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bloom, and I'm from Shadow Hills. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk today. I want to particularly thank councilmembers O'Farrell, Fuentes, and Martinez for this motion. The eastern corridor routes proposed by the High-Speed Rail Authority will tunnel under and through the Angeles National Forest, the San Gabriel National Monument, and over the Tohanga Wash, not to mention our communities. They will negatively impact our groundwater sources and the environment, including endangered species. Yet, High-Speed Rail Authority has included these routes as part of their normal EIR process. Your motion will hopefully provide pre-studies of these sensitive environmentally, environmental areas, especially the E2 route, which transverses the Tohanga Wash. Our community should not be held hostage over the next two to three years during the normal EIR process. And instead, we need to get these damaging routes eliminated sooner rather than later. This is David and Goliath, and we are David. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. Okay, David? All right.
Good morning. I'm Dave DePinto. I'm a resident of Shadow Hills, Sunland, California. I'm also president of the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. I wanted to thank Councilman Fuentes and Councilmember Martinez for proffering this motion. We support it in its entirety. We think doing some of these studies in advance is critical, because there's a lot of momentum toward tunneling right now. And this is not just a foothills community issue, it's also a San Fernando road issue, San Fernando community issue, because some of the tunnels could be built along that corridor, and we don't know enough about the details of the tunneling construction phase to simply say tunneling's gonna be the best thing since sliced bread. We also think that it's very important, as we're seeing right now, for the council to engage on this issue prior to the conclusion of the EIR and the EIS. We've been saying that what goes into EIR and EIS is as important as what comes out, and we're getting that recognition now, because the High-Speed Rail Authority is certainly prone to move quickly. They're trying to meet deadlines. They're trying to get this thing down the road as quickly as possible. As a number of my colleagues have mentioned, the SAA report, which stands for Supplemental Alternatives Analysis Report, was just released yesterday. We're reviewing it. It's over 100 pages. It's pretty complex. It will be reviewed at the downtown board meeting for the High-Speed Rail Authority next week. We encourage our council representatives to attend the meeting and to speak their minds at that meeting. One of the things that we have noticed in the report is that every alternative ultimately winds up through the San Fernando Valley and into Burbank. We are conceptualizing the idea of a no Burbank alternative. We think that everyone in the city should consider this, consider encouraging the High-Speed Rail Authority to look at it as an alternative, not just a no-project alternative, but a no-Burbank alternative. And we also think this could reap additional economic benefits for the city of L.A. if there was not a Burbank station, but if L.A. was the terminus. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Jacobs, Dawn Jacobs?
Hi, my name is Dawn Jacobs, and I'm a new resident of Shadow Hills. I feel really helpless right now. I don't know how to help, but I'm very grateful in support of this resolution, because thus far, the information provided by the HSR and their committee and their willingness to help us fully understand has been overwhelming for an average person such as myself. And I was not here when this HSR was voted in. I'm also a recent transplant from Chicago. But as I understand it from the recent report, the SAA, that these, these reports, these E-routes are devastating to our communities, to our habitats, our water, and our overall environment. And after all the study the HSR committee has done on the SH14 and 5, I don't understand why they're taking this detour and looking to devastate our communities. My 12-year-old is out riding her horse right now on the trails where she'll no longer be able to do that. I, please, put, let's push this, let's push these studies. Let's eliminate these routes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out. Mr. Walsh and Spindler? Mr. Spindler, you're right there. Why don't you come up? Mr. Spindler?
The high-speed rail, like Charlie Beck is a train wreck. Woo-hoo! We don't want it. It also kills farmers in the Central Valley. You have a lot of allies up north. Use those allies. They don't want their farmland taken, just like Shadow Hills doesn't want their horse property taken. People discriminate against farmers and equestrians. I have a farm. Now, the DWP burned it down two years ago, and I'm suing them, but I have a farm. Now, I don't want a train through my area, and I don't want a train through Shadow Hills. I don't want this train at all. It's a train wreck. Woo-hoo! It's going off the rails. It's killing neighborhoods. It's killing the state. Fly on Delta. No on the high-speed rail. Get rid of this train wreck. Joe Byrne, screw off. Woo-hoo!
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. We oppose the high-speed rail. Get to, from downtown L.A. to downtown San Francisco in three and a half hours. Now, it's gonna be seven hours. It's triple what we agreed to when those people who got fooled into voting for the, for it. It's gonna cost a fortune. It's gonna lose a fortune in operation. And I'm sorry that you were not able to see this woman up here and the tears streaming down her face. Her life is in danger, her children in danger, and, but again, you won't show this white woman-
Stay, no, stay on the subject. Stay on the subject. All right, your time is over, and this, this hearing is concluded. Mr. Fuentes, you want to wrap this up as we move on?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, and colleagues for listening to the testimony on this issue. The motion's very simple. It asks that the High-Speed Rail Authority perform a couple of studies in anticipation of what is going to be a very important environmental impact review process. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things, colleagues. In a lot of ways, this project is very easy. It deals with greenhouse gas reductions. It deals with trying to electrify the transportation sector in California, which we know is 40% of the cause of GHG. It deals with trying to modernize the economy for the state. The hard part is, where do you put it? And I think it's really important for us to vet this as much as possible, to make sure that wherever it is that these alignments end up going, they do it in a way that minimizes the impact and maximizes the benefit. And so, there's a lot to speak to this. I know that we're gonna be talking an awful lot in the weeks to months and year to come during this EIR process, but I would respectfully ask for your support in asking the authority to do some of this early study so that we can make the most informed decision possible.
Thank you, sir. So, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that measure passes. If we could recess the regular meeting and move into the special meeting?
Blumenfeld, Bonnebusque, Nocedio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corres, Corian, Labaj, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present in quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, it's my understanding that there's a request to have this item continued to Tuesday? So, you are disrupting the meeting, that there's a request to have this, or, no, Mr. Parks, am I wrong? Go right ahead.
I just want to make sure, agree, we agree to have it continued specifically if we can make sure we meet the June 24th date for the calendar.
And my understanding is if the notice information is given to the clerk's office to provide the notice so that it could be published in the newspaper on two occasions, then you still should be able to make the June 24th.
Who's responsible for giving them that information?
I believe your office and the department, our office could help-
Okay.
-and dealing with the legislative analysts for that committee.
Can we put that on your shoulders, Dion, to make sure that happens?
Sure, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure they can. Okay, so-
Susie, Mr. President, also, motion 13A has been circulated, so that will be continued to Tuesday the 9th as well.
Okay, so, with that said, we will adjourn, so that item is continued to Tuesday. We will adjourn the special and return to the regular meeting. What is before this body?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, so, let us begin with Donna Pierman and Miriam Fogler.
Yeah, anyway, if you care about the valley, we open Van Nuys video conferencing. City council doesn't give the public enough time to speak. One minute is not enough, and some people, every other month is for people who can't travel. Warning, warning, Obama not our president, did not listen to his commander. He pulled out Iraq. Now, we're heading toward World War III. ISIS, Boko Haram, ISIL, slowly taking over us, 'cause the U.S. betrayed Iraq, and as people, we could have a problem with Iraq, against ISIS, against us. Anyway, ISIS will come to kill us here. We didn't take care of it there. We'll have to fight for here, now, we'll have to fight here now. Obama and the Democrat communists are making friends with dictators. Cuba, Iran, North Korea, you voters voted for Obama, you caused this problem. Don't compound it by voting for Hillary or the Communist Party, liberal Democrats. Don't vote for Paul Rand, Republicans, he's no good. We got a problem here, they're gonna come over here, they're gonna kill us over here. ISIS is gonna come over here, because we're not taking care of it there. This is wrong. L.A. is-
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Pierman, Ms. Fogler?
Not very much time to speak in one minute, but I'll tell you something-
Put her time up. Go ahead.
Obama, Obama is the wrong person for, and is a big embarrassment for our, for the American black people. I tell you right now, there's Dr. Ben Carson, he's running on the slate. He's, he is genuinely a wonderful man, he's a neurosurgeon. And tell you something, Obama has destroyed this country here. You know, you people have voted the wrong person, and because of his color, and I think we should have based it on who the person can do the job, the best job. And that's what I look at it. I'm blind, I don't care about skin, but I'm gonna tell you right now-
Huh?
We need to get the best candidate in there, and I don't care who it is on the Republican- candidate in there, and I don't care who it is on the Republican slate. If it's Dr. Ben Carson, I'm voting for him. I don't care who it is, but no Democratic communists in there because they took away the... We had two chances in Iraq, and the second time, we promised not to withdraw, and we broke our promise, and they're going to come here and kill us.
Mr. President...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The presidential election is not within the jurisdiction of this body.
I get that now. Thank you for informing me. Mr. Eric Previn, John Camara, and Candido is here.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. It is Eric Previn, a city resident from District 2, and I would like to thank Councilmember Corcoran for putting Item 2 on the agenda for Wednesday, I think it is, just because I do think Prop K is something we should be talking about, and I do appreciate that. I also want to say, sir, that if, in fact, the cameras are broken, which I do find hard to believe, but if they are, and they can only today function in the diminutive size, maybe there's a way we could adjust that for future meetings in the Valley. Because we did hear today, today was an interesting meeting. A number of the items which you put out as bait were not nibbled on by the characters. Instead, we had actually a bunch of characters coming in talking about the high-speed rail. So, a toast to Mr. Fuentes, who is responsive and talking to his folks. We're getting very close to some good changes here, sir. So, with that in mind, I would like to update that the appraisals have come back from the property at 4230 Coldwater, and of course, they are widely, there's a big discrepancy. But I'm not exactly sure how to handle it. I'd like to study it a little bit more closely, but I will report back. And thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, if we could have John Candido and Mark Morris?
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. John Camara, member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. Welcome, and thank you for returning to the San Fernando Valley. It is greatly appreciated that you continue to hold these meetings here in Van Nuys, so we, as constituents who reside in the San Fernando Valley, feel connected and that our concerns are being heard at these meetings held in Van Nuys. Thank you.
Thank you. Candido Mares, followed by Mark Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you'll hold my time. Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers, Candido Maris, proudly represented by Mr. Mitch Englinger, and I want to welcome you here to the San Fernando Valley. Mr. President, a famous poet once said, "Hold fast to the dreams, for if the dream dies, life is like a broken-winged bird that cannot fly." And this week, Mr. President, with your leadership, the leadership of our mayor and the city council, you made the dream for working people in this city continue. But with that, sir, I want to say that the reason why I'm proud of being represented by Mr. Mitch Englinger is because there's another dream with other people. We have to support businesses because in that audience, I saw future entrepreneurs, I saw small business owners, I saw creators of jobs. So, I'm telling you the truth. I want the public to know that because I'm not going to state that if my councilman was here in the 1990s, he would have been the one that stopped Valley's secession. No, this is about keeping dreams alive. We live in the greatest city and the greatest country in the world, and Los Angeles is a city of dreams and hopes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Morris, Mark, followed by John Walsh?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Mark Morris, an activist with the SoCal Climate Action Coalition and a resident of North Valley. We are concerned about an expansion of shipping toxic crude by rail in California, especially the fact that trains will be traveling through the San Fernando Valley, carrying dangerous crude oils known to be volatile and highly toxic. Five major accidents have happened in the first five months of 2015 in North America, and despite federal moves to improve safety, trains keep exploding. Phillips 66 Santa Maria Refinery in San Luis Obispo County plans to move 20,800 crude tankers to and from their Napa facility every year. These can be 80 cars, trains, that stretch a mile long. San Luis Obispo is about to make a decision that will affect the health and safety of L.A. neighborhoods. Mar Vista Community Council just passed a resolution that would have the city opposing this project, I'm sorry, and call you to please approve this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. So, if I could have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Spindler?
John Walsh at JW Walsh Confidential, HollywoodHighlands.org, or tweeting at HollywoodDems. Go there now and find out about the presidential debate that we're sponsoring, we're attempting to sponsor. I want people out there to know what's really happening here. They're taking us seriously now. That's why they're concealing our face. We're not jokes. We spent a lot of time organizing the angry white guy vote, and there is an angry white guy vote, especially in the Valley, and we defeated the city council, the mayor, and every elected official's candidate, Carolyn Ramsey. And we didn't defeat them by a few votes. We defeated them by 9.6% of the vote. And they are now going to take us seriously, and they're going to play dirty. That's the way Wesson, who is a white man, Whitey Wesson, is going to do it. I'm telling you right now, vote for anybody but...
Your time is up. Thank you. So, we have Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Spindler.
Ableism, ableism, ableism. Such racist remarks by the little men syndrome up there. Because, again, some of you in here don't have to tell me that not one of you suffer a disability because a scar or hidden disability with big ears is considered a disability, an impairment. An individual's life has changed by the obvious, and the obvious upon observation. Individuals is afforded the same protection under ADA, big ears. And so, again, how are we so superior in nature? The ableism implies a connection between disability and abnormality, Mr. Corcoran. Acceptance of people as a minority, which guarantees the rights and protections under the American Disability Act. Ramsey.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler?
We got to play dirty. So, now we introduce the stopping of Mitchell Englander, the Englander Liberation Front, or ELF. No, I'm not. I have a right to the sign. The sign's in front of me. The Englander Liberation Front, to stop this pig from being the takeover of Supervisor District 5. He ran for reelection, knowing he was going to be paid to run for reelection. He's a rat. No on Mitchell Englander for Supervisor District 5. You can start now raising money on any other candidate because the L.A. City Council wants to expand the corruption to 2.5 million more victims in the L.A. County area. Go up to the north part of the county, study, learn, no. ELF defeats the dwarf. No on the dwarf. No on Englander.
Thank you. Okay, that, no applause. That concludes general public... Now, you're disrupting the meeting. There's no, the public comment is over. What is before this body, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions for post and to refer.
They are posted and referred. That leaves us, members with announcements, any announcements? I don't see any announcements. If all could rise for adjourning motions, I'll look to my right, and I will call all rise for adjourning motions. I will defer to Ms. Martinez.
I'd like, colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Lorenzo Roscon Marquez. Mr. Marquez was born in January 1st, 1921, in Arizona. After his mother passed away, he went to live in Mexico with his family at the age of eight to help his father attend the ranch. When he was 20 years old, he returned to California and worked in construction until he traveled back to Mexico to marry the love of his life, Rosa Torres. Within a year, they went back, they moved back to North Hollywood, California, to start their family. Lorenzo had an incredible work ethic and desire to excel. He became a licensed contractor and operator of a very successful business for over 40 years that built homes, installed main lines, and sewer lines all over the city of Los Angeles. He instilled in his family the importance of hard work, dedication, education, and saving for the future. He was kind-hearted and loving, and his calm demeanor and strength provided that foundation that his family and friends relied upon. His family was his utmost sense of pride, and he regarded them as his greatest accomplishment. He will forever be remembered for his infectious smile, contagious laughter, and big heart. He's survived by his loving wife, Rosa Torres de Marquez, his sons, Francisco Javier, Lorenzo, Hector, Paul, Jaime, his brother Salvador, his grandchildren, Chico, Mia, Sonia, Alessa, Angela, Ray, Philip, Jeremiah, Jessica, great-grandchildren, Shayna, Dakota, Cameron Cooper, Daniel, Nicholas, Lucia, Ray, Jody, and great-grandchildren, Paisley, and countless other family members, and special friends. We hope that we can adjourn his memory. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Mariana Felzer, who passed away May 14, 2015, at the age of 89. She was born February 4, 1926, in Los Angeles. Ms. Felzer received her AB degree from University of Santa Barbara in 1949, or JD from UCLA in 1957. She was LAPD Police Commission President from '76 to '78. In that year, President Carter nominated her to the U.S. District Court for the Central District of California. She was confirmed by the Senate in September '78, making her the first female district judge appointed in the Central District of California. Her most memorable ruling during her tenure was striking down Prop 187, the 1994 ballot initiative targeting undocumented immigrants. That garnered national attention. She also was instrumental in the landmark class-action lawsuit against Countrywide Financial Group for their misleading practices on mortgage securities. She was a giant on the federal court in Los Angeles for nearly 40 years, ruling on a major complex litigation and civil rights issues. She had a reputation for volunteering herself for cases judges enjoyed least. She worked tirelessly to ensure justice was being served. To the form, she worked until the last hours of her life, ruling on motions days before her passing on May 14. She was fearless and could be fearsome. She survived by a host of family and friends.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Englander?
President.
Okay, so, if the clerk's office could make that a two-signature. Okay, Mr. Englander?
Yeah, thank you. I actually received a special request from one of our, all of our mutual friends, is a dear friend of Pete Repovich and his family. Today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Michael King. Michael, who with his brother transformed King World Productions, a modest company they inherited from their father, into a syndicated, a syndicator of television mega-hits like The Oprah Winfrey Show, Jeopardy!, and The Wheel of Fortune, passed away on Wednesday. Michael Gordon King, the son of Charles and Lucille King, was born in New Jersey on March 8, 1948. He assumed the title of President of King World at a salary of $150 a week. Soon after graduating from his university in 1975, he joined his brother Roger in Fort Lauderdale, and they co-hosted an all-night talk show and sold advertising to, among others, the mobster Langsey, and who promoted his dinner theater. The King Brothers seized an opening for independently-produced and syndicated game shows, talk shows in the 1970s, when the federal regulations limited how much programming the three major networks could actually own. Their eye for talent and salesmanship to local station managers helped make stars of Alex Trebek, Dr. Phil McGraw, Rachel Ray, Roseanne Barr, and transformed Miss Winfrey into the nation's top-rated daytime talk show host. On a typical day in the 1980s, 90 million people watched at least one of the company's three biggest shows, Wheel of Fortune, Jeopardy!, and Oprah. By the 90s, the mid-1990s, the proliferation of cable television, satellite networks, and home video led the government to relax the ownership restrictions on network television, allowing the Kings to sell their company, where they started working at $150 a week. They sold it then in 1999 for $2.5 billion. Our deepest sympathies go to his family, his coworkers, and his friends. Michael was preceded in death by his brother, Roger. Michael, however, survived by his wife, Jenna, and his four children, Theodore, Audra, Jesse, and Alexandra.
Thank you. I'm still looking to the, now the left side of the room, checking back on the right. No more adjourning motions. This council meeting is adjourned.